Do we have anybody on the phone? Is there anybody on the phone for public participation?
My name is Sean Taylor.
Sean, you're good. No, go ahead. Nobody's on the phone, so you're up, Sean. Thank you.
My name is Sean Taylor. I was, was, a resident of Lincoln, Illinois. I'm a veteran. I've served in the Army for a year. I got a knee injury and caused me to come back to the States. I have an idea to present to the council, which I presented to Sangamon County Council and Macon County Council as well. My idea is for urban farms, not growing weed or anything like that, but, you know, sustainability within really bad neighborhoods. I have been working for four years and to try to create solar, small homes for homeless people, as well as education for those people. And trying to get them educated to the point where they can not only sustain their solar homes, but sustain the gardens of which I would like them to produce. And it's not just what they want to grow. They go in the neighborhood, they ask people what kind of vegetables that they like, and we would do it. And the best part about this is with the sustainability, we have solar homes, small solar homes, that cost under $5,000. Apparently, they're really small. And they're, and don't get theirs unless they hook up to the grid. I've been working on this project for about four years now. I, I am, I was homeless. I have been in addiction. Not only my military service, but I have seen those who are struggling day by day. I want to see the homeless have a home. And there's three things that I know that makes a human being worthwhile. Number one, a place to stay. Number two, an education, even though they think they might be too stupid, but there's an education involved in it that proves that they're not, that gives them a sense of self-worth. And three, an opportunity to use not only that solar home and that education, but the community involvement. When you have people saying, "I would like to grow broccoli. I'd like to grow carrots. I'd like to grow this." And they take that as a note and they do that for their community. I have learned in research that this decreases crime by 75% as a regular community garden decreases crime by 25%. If you have somebody living on the property with volunteers, whether it be from school-aged kids to the older community, to people who are just interested in it, the volunteers to come in. You not only are yourself in that urban farm, you have the surrounding community to help out. And not only just growing fruits and vegetables to sustain their community, but you also have the support of the community around you, people who you never thought in a million years would change their ways, could change their ways due to education. When I was homeless, I used to do desperate things for money, for drugs. But if I had a solar home and I had the community involvement, the people surrounding me that were supporting me, then it'd be a different story. I didn't have a choice. I couldn't find a job. I was in the infantry, 11 Bravo. My job was to kill the enemy. There's no jobs out here that is gonna let you kill the criminals, you know what I mean? So if we had a second or third chance, and a fourth chance, to just prove to people that you are not worthless, that you have an opportunity to change, and not only to change yourself, but to change the community, because as a seed grows, so do you. You learn pest and disease, the sun, solar homes. You have to not only maintain that solar home, but maintain the garden for the community. I have been working on this project for four years. I have been working with Tim Dudley in Decatur, the revitalization and development specialist. The only thing I got through to him was a solar panel on a factory, of which don't hire too many people. They're limited. But if you take every vacant lot in a bad, every vacant lot that you have in the city, every vacant lot that people have been dumping garbage and couches and, and old stuff that they don't want to deal with anymore, you take that and transform it to put a small 16 by 12 solar home, just enough for one man to live in, with the education to grow vegetables and fruits, and with a specialty, with the education, to combat pests and diseases. My original city had a groundhog problem. I eradicated that in my mother's backyard. Me, myself, but in my heart, I felt like the people, before my mom died, the people that I was living homeless with, in shelters with, they could have the same knowledge I have. I took a course called Mercy Gardens, and it's a bread line in Decatur, Illinois, and my instructor taught me the basics, but I was hungry for more. You can tell me how to plant a seed and how to enrich the soil and to grow any vegetable, and you know what? It's surprising. You can have four to five harvests a year. Not many people know that you can grow vegetables in the wintertime. I've been in the newspapers. I've been on WAND News. The Veterans Commission out of Macon County has donated a tiller to me. Don't get me wrong, I love the tiller, but I hated it when I put it in the garden because it would just churn up weeds. I was a hard worker, and the evidence of my achievements speaks loud today. The Salvation Army, here, the Key Center, I built them a garden. 11 foot by nine foot, by myself, spade shovel, no help, because nobody wanted to get in the dirt. I have built that garden. If you ever get a chance to go through the alley at the Salvation Army Key Center, you will see that garden. Of course, it's probably weeded up right now because of the winter, but there's tomato plants, and there were tomato plants. There was cabbage. There was cucumber. There were, what was that? That's my favorite fruit, too. Watermelon, melon, cantaloupe. I built that because I have a passion to do that. And it wasn't just for me. I wanted to see how many people that garden could help. How many people that that garden could supply with good nutritious fruits, vegetables, without any cost to them, and without any machinery. I did it by myself. 11 foot by nine foot with one man and one shovel. I, I, I implore you to check it out, because gardening's my passion, and I know it can change the world. Not only with the food that it provides, but if you think real hard, and the way our economy's going, the people you can educate to service, service our needs, and for them to become respectable members of society, of which they never thought they could. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Did the council, so Sean, what is, what is your ask of the council itself?
I have been to three cities. This is my third city. I want you guys to give me those vacant lots. I want you guys to give me those homeless people. I know, you guys can't give me homeless people. But I know, I've only been here for like seven months, but I've been in Decatur for 30 years. And people need to know that they're worth something. And I didn't think I was worth anything until I started my first garden. And even though it takes patience and persistence, a lot of patience and persistence, actually, you picking weeds every day, it's like a full-time job, you know what I mean? But I, I, I want to give this to a city. I want to give the idea to the city. Because this has never been done. If you go to Google, YouTube, it's never been done. Solar home on a vacant lot fenced around, and then I had a question one day. I used to work for the county. I used to work for environmental management. There was a question, "How do you keep people from stealing from your garden?" And NPR, apparently, I love NPR. That was in my ear before I got here. NPR apparently got the answer. You put a small border garden around the fence, so people can pick cherry tomatoes and stuff like that. You know, the small vegetables, so they don't steal from the inside garden that services the community. But technically, you're still servicing the community when you have small gardens like that. I'm asking this city to be the first of its kind. I'm asking Lincoln, a new home of which I have decided to live after, trust me, the decision came in the middle of digging that nine-foot-by-11 garden. The decision came when I saw people in the park not doing anything but getting drunk. The decision came when people were asking me, "You got a place to live?" Like, you know what, if you had a little bit of education. Oh, I'm too stupid for that. You're never stupid for anything. You just need to learn something that you could do to help others. And I was that guy in Decatur and Springfield that thought I was too stupid. I had the idea. I had the floor plans. But nobody wanted to invest in my idea, to come together with people like you, community leaders in the city. I had two people that supported me in Decatur, Illinois. Tim Dudley, revitalization and development specialist, but he decided to go bigger. He wanted to do factories, but the homeless crisis was still on the rise. And our former mayor, Billy Tyus, because he decided to go to Bloomington, and then follow the, our assistant city manager followed our city manager to Bloomington because they didn't see a future in Decatur. This is an opportunity to be the first, the first, we've seen YouTube videos about, and Google about, tiny solar homes and all that stuff, but which one has the garden in it where there's a man or two people or three people that live in a small vacant lot? And they go around and they say, "What's your favorite vegetable, ma'am? What do your children like to eat?" Oh, you know, most kids are like, "I hate broccoli." Okay, well, carrots. I hate carrots. Yeah, but there's always a way. I just want to transform a city to be the first of its kind. If I can't do the city, I will go private enterprise. But I've always been about community first. I had this opportunity, I talked to Howard, I didn't even get a chance, I didn't even get a chance to talk to Howard Buffett, but if I would've told him my idea, not asked for money, he would've invested in that. And I'm from a Howard Buffett town. I'm from a Howard Buffett city that creates rehab centers and opioid centers. And I had the chance to talk to him, but I missed it. So apparently, it wasn't my time to talk to him. I missed it. You know why I missed it? I got a haircut. They think it was giving free haircuts for veterans, and I was a little bushy. And, and then when they were doing the national anthem, he stopped cutting my hair. I put the salute up, and we stopped. And then the sheriff, Tony Brown, said, "Did you get an opportunity to talk to Mr. Buffett?" I said, "Where's he at?" He's like, "He just left five minutes ago." So I felt that that was a reason. Now I find myself here in Lincoln a year later, hoping and praying, because this is not a city for homeless people. There are no shelters around for homeless people. Education, unless you go to the college, is not for homeless people. And though I am not homeless, but I have been there, and I am asking that you give this city a chance to bring more revenue in here, to bring more people in here, and educate those who thought they could lose hope because they were on the streets constantly, because I have been there. And when you incorporate not only the urban agriculture and the solar homes and the community invol, what did I just say? There's three things that make a good person. Having a place to stay so they don't have to worry. Number two, to have an education, though maybe short, my education was only two months. And I learned 14 weeks of how to kill the enemy in the Army. I was in the infantry. I didn't know job skill out here. You give them an opportunity to have educated about soil health, pest and disease, different ways of nitrogen, carbon, different vegetables that they can basically capitalize on and be proud of it, like I was when I took that small, little, two-month course. My instructor still cries, her name is Cindy Jackson, she was just on WAND News three months ago. And I called her and I said, "Everything that you taught me, I am trying with all my heart to bring to cities." She would like people to take out vacant houses and use the gardens, but this is a small city. You know, you don't have to pay enough mon, you don't have to pay a lot of money if you grow locally. You know what I'm saying? People are trucking things in, peppers, tomatoes, 72 hours. You know Guatemala, it's 72 hours to get here, just for peppers, bell peppers, stuff like that. Why can't we do that here? Why do we have to invest in companies that truck stuff in when this apparently, I've done the soil test here when I first got here, you have the land to grow any vegetable or fruit if you just have the manpower, the people, the education to do it? I'm sorry, I'm going ahead of myself. I get passionate about this, and I, I always think to myself, "Why don't I just go private?" And my answer is, I want to see cities and communities thrive. I am in Lincoln, Illinois, a decision that I made when I was waist-deep in dirt. My intention was to go to Springfield and help the pantry there. But for some reason, in the middle of digging and the sweat and the heat, I said, "I would like to make Lincoln my home." And though I've heard about the racism, and I've heard about all the political bureaucracies, I don't care. I don't care. I don't care what color you are, who you are. I don't care, because I am held to a different standard. I'm held to a standard of fixing good places to make them better. This city has been nothing but generous to me since I've been here.
Sean, I hate to interrupt you.
Sorry.
Couple, couple things. I'm up here, to your right. You're right, up here. So first off, thank you for coming forward, from one veteran to another. You know, thank you for your service. And
And here that to 2014.
And thank you for sharing your story with us. I think the, the idea that you have is, is a great story, and the, the idea is wonderful. What I think the next step might be is for you to get with Ms. Cavillman sitting there. She's our city administrator.
That's why you were shaking your head like that.
And if you give her some of the details for the program that you're talking about.
I have plans and
Yeah, she can, she can distribute that to the council, and then we can have a discussion about it, and then reach back out with you. If that would be okay with you.
That would be awesome. Thank you. I don't want to take up all of your guys' time. I'm just, my name is Sean Taylor, and I'm an urban farmer.
Thank you, Sean. Have a good night. Okay. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and move on to the consent agenda, which consists of the payment of bills, approval of trick-or-treat hours on Saturday, October 31st, 2020, from 5:00 PM until 8:00 PM in the City of Lincoln, approval of the City of Lincoln holiday schedule for calendar year 2021, and approval of City of Lincoln regular city council meeting and committee of the whole meeting schedule for calendar year 2021.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. You too. Thank you. Alderman Keller made the motion. Who made the second? Alderman Fleschman made the second. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Fleschman?
Yes.
Mr. Welch?
Yes.
Mr. Parrott?
Yes.
Mr. Downs?
Yes.
Mr. Keller?
Yes.
Mrs. Horn?
Yes.
Mrs. Horn?
Yes.
Mr. Bateman?
Abstain.
Okay, next up is the reports. First up is the City Treasurer's report for September 2020. Mr. Konzo.
Thank you, Mayor. You've all received copies of the Treasurer's report, and I will talk about it here briefly. Their general fund balance has improved over where we were a month ago, and where we were a couple of months ago, and there's a couple of reasons for that. I will say, though, we're coming into a period of time here where we've got several bond payments due there due by December 1st, so they'll be made during the, during the month of November. So that's going to result in some reduction there, particularly, there's a sewer bond payment, which is a large payment that's paid out of the sewer O&M account. We're waiting for the final distribution of property tax, which generally in, in the past, and I expect this year also, will be, will be in the month of November, and that will be, we should see, we may see a distribution yet in October. I don't think so. But the final distribution will be, will be in November, and we'll have a, kind of a clearer picture there too, where we are with the balance that we have available to pay the TIF bond, or the TIF increment with, for the bond payment that's due. We've talked in the past about refinancing that. I'm not going to go into that again tonight, but that will certainly help to reduce that payment overall, and particularly in the short term. The other things that want to note, you'll notice there, if you look at the attachments, the other accounts, the operating cash, it's a general ledger. So we've, we've paid quite a bit out of the, out of the sewer O&M account because we've done a lot of work with the upgrades that are being done to the sewer system and to the sewer plant. It's expected you're going to see a reduction in that balance. I would like to talk a little bit about the, the various revenue streams, and you've got attachments for those. In June, for, for the month of June, this would've been received during the month of September, sales tax and use tax. It's up over where it was last year. I'm not sure why that is. It's certainly good news. A lot of this took a big hit for the month of March when this virus pandemic began, and in the month of April. And it seems to be coming back, but we're still a long way from that being resolved. So I wouldn't be real optimistic about, you know, about that continuing to be the case. I'm hoping it's, that this trend continues, but we could still have a long way to go. And there are other things coming up, too, that could have a profound negative impact or positive impact, depending on how they come out on the, on the economy, and particularly regarding unemployment, regarding taxes, regarding regulation, in terms of those things. So we'll, we'll have to wait to see how those things play out. Non-home rule sales tax, interestingly enough, even though the, the municipal share of the state sales tax and the use tax has increased, the non-home rule sales tax has not increased. In fact, it's gone down a little bit. Only likely explanation for that is a lot of the things that are subject to the municipal sales tax or the state sales tax, which we receive a share of, and the, that are not taxable under the non-home rule sales tax. So you could be that they're selling things that are, are not taxable, where the non-home rule sales tax would not be applied. And in those cases, we would, if those sales are down, you would see a decline in the tax revenue from that. Not down a lot, but it, but it is down. Thing to keep in mind about this is this is the money that goes into our capital projects fund. And then as you go through this state income tax there, too, you see we've had a, an increase. Part of that probably due to, as I've said before, a delay in the filing deadlines. So what we saw happening in July and probably carried over into August is increased revenue from, as a result of that. And then finally, the motor fuel tax, just, well, two more, motor fuel tax next. You see there, compared to where we were a year ago, this is for the month of August, the, there's a little bit of an increase there as well. So that's good news. Millions of people are starting to drive more. Hopefully, that trend will continue. And then the, the last one is the video, video gaming tax. We finally started to see a collection on that. The system was shut down from mid-March through June. It's reflected there. But it did come back stronger in July than it was a year ago, which we had, I kind of thought would happen, and it has. Don't have the collections for August yet, but I was able to look them up on the gaming site, the gaming board website. Looks like about 32,000 for the month of August. So we're going to see that, and that'll come in sometime this month. And that's where we stand. And unless you have questions, that's really all I have for tonight.
Any questions? Okay, Mr. Treasurer, thank you. Okay, next up is the City Clerk's report for September 2020. Peggy?
For the month of September, we received $381,722.76 in sewer receipts. We did receive payment from one of the prisons in the amount of $12,022.60 in the month of September.
Okay. Any questions? Alderman Fleschman.
We're interested in these numbers for, to just our tier possibly, so if we can ask, is Shannon taken care of the last six months of that?
Yep, she has been. And I've already sent a request to them asking about that, so that we can make that decision, because we're gonna need to do that here soon.
I was just curious. Peggy, is that 381,000 been probably what we, monthly, over the last six months, that about where we're, our receipts have been?
Off the top of my head, I, I don't know exactly if that was the same. I can go back and look. I can, I can send you the last six months worth, since you've only been here for the one.
We'll just let Shannon from CNT, we'll get a report from her.
She, she has, or they have requested the, what we have been getting in.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, all other reports are on file and/or will be posted to the website. Moving down to new business. First up is 9A, the approval of payment application number two for Plotker Construction Company for CSO improvements in an amount not to exceed $701,440.
Move to approve. Second.
Alderman Horniki made the motion. Alderman Bateman, second. Discussion. Alderman Bateman.
I just want to point out that Plotker is the contractor that was hired to do the CSO project down at the sewer treatment plant. So it, as we've said before, that when you see these pay come forward, it's for all different aspects of this project, and we want to keep things moving quickly and smoothly and keep things, the, the pay going so that everybody stays happy. So, you know, Plotker is the contractor working down at the treatment plant.
And for those who were not listening last week when we discussed this, this particular pay app consists of the 48-inch diameter storm sewer that went through the site, and that has been rerouted around the proposed construction site. It includes the Sherman Sewer diversion structure that is complete, and this will tie the sewer directly into the headworks of the wastewater treatment plant. And then the mass excavation for the screen and pump station structure has been completed, and they did complete a mud mat. And if you have questions or need more detail, there are photos in the meeting packet for those curious.
It's halfway to the center of the earth. It's a deep hole.
Yeah, it is. It's a crater. Okay, any other questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bateman?
Yes.
Mr. Fleschman?
Yes.
Mr. Welch?
Yes.
Mr. Parrott?
Yes.
Mr. Downs?
Yes.
Mr. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Horniki?
Yes.
Mrs. Horn?
Yes.
Okay, next item is 9B, approval of change order number one from Plotker Construction Company for the CSO upgrade projects in an amount not to exceed $1,312.50.
Move to approve.
Second.
Alderman Bateman made the motion. Alderman Horn, second. Discussion. Alderman Bateman.
Again, I just want to clear up that this change order is because the two pieces of equipment that hook together, basically stirring rods, one was stainless steel, the other one was a galvanized metal, and that met specs. But in, in Andrew's thoughts and everybody else agreed that just for $1,300 to make both pieces stainless- Um, thoughts and and everybody else agreed that just for thirteen hundred dollars to make both pieces stainless steel. Just the amount of money in maintenance alone, keeping the galvanized clean versus stainless steel, we would. We would recoup this savings in no time whatsoever, so it's it's no change, it's just a change in the material that it's made of. To be consistent with the the other product.
Thanks. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Horn?
Yes.
Mr. Bateman?
Yes.
Mr. Fleschman?
Yes.
Mr. Welch?
Yes.
Mr. Parrot?
Yes.
Mr. Downs?
Yes.
Mr. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Honecky?
Yes.
Okay, next item up is the approval of pay application number four, the final pay up from Stark Engineering for Union Street Pump Station Construction. In an amount not to exceed seventy thousand dollars.
So move.
Second.
Alderman Parrot made the motion, Alderman Bateman second, discussion. Uh, the only thing I'll say is this is the final pay up from Stark. Um, once we get this paid, the they will get that closed out, that loan closed out with the EPA, and then they will start working. On the EPA loan app for the um, next contractor that's ready to go. Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Bateman?
Yes.
Mr. Fleschman?
Yes.
Mr. Welch?
Yes.
Mr. Parrot?
Yes.
Mr. Downs?
Yes.
Mr. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Honecky?
Yes.
Mrs. Horn?
Yes.
Okay, moving to page two. Next up is the advising consent to the mayoral appointment of Blake Shelton, Jan Gleason, Jeanette Harris, Sharice Johnson. Zach Landers, Joe Shaler, Lori Hill, Stacy Freeze, Michelle Bauer, Elijah Hewitt. Marty Nitzel, Ron Keller, as members of the Diversity and Inclusion Commission.
Move to approve.
Second.
Alderman Honecky made the motion, Alderman Horn second. Discussion. Alderman Parrot.
Were um, were all these people, um, did they seek out these positions, or were they um, recruited at all, or how how did this happen?
They all sought out, um, they they had an interest in being on the commission, and then we had a lot more than this that came forward. And uh, we, Alderman Keller and I, we did set up time and had individual meetings with them. To see where they stood on this topic and and the commission itself. Uh, we also used it as an opportunity to give them our thoughts on the purpose of this commission. And our hopes to to see what this commission could do for the community.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Horn?
Yes.
Mr. Bateman?
Yes.
Mr. Fleschman?
Yes.
Mr. Welch?
Yes.
Mr. Parrot?
Yes.
Mr. Downs?
Yes.
Mr. Keller?
Epstein.
Mr. Honecky?
Yes.
Okay, next item up is the approval of rules and guidelines for the Employee Management Insurance Advisory Committee.
Move to approve. Second.
Alderman Fleschman made the motion, Alderman Keller second, discussion. Has everybody seen the update that Ms. Cavillman sent out? Okay, great. Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Honecky?
Yes.
Mrs. Horn?
Yes.
Mr. Bateman?
Epstein.
Mr. Fleschman?
Yes.
Mr. Welch?
Yes.
Mr. Parrot?
Yes.
Mr. Downs?
Yes.
Next up is approval of payment policy sent by certified US mail for sewer customers with accounts with delinquent balances. As of March thirty-first, twenty twenty.
Motion for discussion.
Second. Alderman Bateman made the motion, Alderman Downs second, Alderman Bateman.
So I've had a change of thought. Um, after reading some of the comments on Facebook and constituents reaching out. In a discussion with the city clerk and other members of the sewer department. I believe that. There should be a letter put in this month sewer bills that go out. Explaining that they have to reach out to us to arrange payments to get current. Um, wa- waiving the ninety-day thing, just tell them they have to reach out and make arrangements. If they don't make arrangements by the next billing cycle. Water would be shut off on everybody. You've all seen the list? Of that list, there is multiple people that are on there multiple times. Um, there's one individual that owns, one person owes over four thousand dollars. We have one prominent business in town that owes just under three thousand dollars. And we have found out that the water company is willing to shut the water off. And from the comments that were made to me. And I fall in, I agree with them because I own multiple properties, and I make sure my sewer bill is paid. Everybody else has to pay their sewer bill. We should make these people pay their sewer bill, if they truly have a hardship. They should reach out to the clerk's office and make a. Reasonable effort to either, A, try to get caught up, make some kind of payment. We've all heard the comments made, anything's better than nothing. You know, if you can't afford forty dollars a month, pay twenty, o- only get behind half, or make some kind of arrangements. But the thing that got me was, when the, when I reached out to the sewer department, as I mentioned last week. And I'm pretty sure the number stuck in my head of a hundred and nine delinquent properties. Seventy-nine of those were delinquent before COVID. So so, I don't want to sound complacent here, but people are using COVID as the excuse now. You were behind before the pandemic, some of them way behind, habitual behind, always behind. We're we're sitting here paying our bills, those people have to pay theirs, or they at least have to make an effort to pay it, so I don't know how we can redo this. And vote on it so that when them bills go out on the thirty-first. I don't know if she's got a form letter ready, but um, I think we need to get this voted on tonight, so those letters can be put in the sewer bills the thirty-first. And we start collecting some money.
The next item is actually. What we were going to do if we don't do the ninety letter, so the second object or second item. I guess if you wanted to disregard the ninety day letter and vote on the other one, I'd. To be, you know.
Right, Mr. Hoblit.
I just want the council to consider, um, that if you're, so if you have somebody coming in who's paying half, let's say instead of paying forty dollars a month, they would get, they're going to start paying twenty dollars a month. They're going to potentially become used to that, so I just want to make sure the council has. Um, at least an idea as to when this pandemic is done, at what point in time they're going to ask, well, now we want the full amount of everything that's back due at this point. Um, so I think that should also be consideration, while I think you need to have a kind of a plan in the future. As to after everything's done, said and done, you know, what terms are you going to assert upon people uh, for the remainder of the balance.
Alderman Honecky.
I was just going to say I'd I'd make a motion to remove item nine F from the agenda, and then we'll go on to the next. Subject if that's. We just did a discussion, is all.
There really, there really wasn't.
Right, we just had a motion to discuss, but I'm making a motion to remove it from the agenda altogether, but if we're done discussing, I guess.
An amended motion. So you've made a a motion to remove it?
Correct.
Or second?
Second.
Alderman Honecky made the motion to remove item nine F from the agenda, Alderman Bateman second. Discussion. Beth, did you have something?
Did I have something to talk about this?
About this this vote, yes.
Yes, I I thought maybe Alderman Fleschman liked to talk about it, but we did look into possibly helping through some kind of grant for the city, um, using. Funds from the cure for this, to help some of this, you want to go ahead with that?
Yeah, I I reached out to City Administrator Cavillman to see if the the cure, I'm not sure, Beth, can you help me there, what's that stand for?
Yeah, it's a cure, it's a COVID urgent relief, uh, our grant money that was received.
Yeah, there there's programs out there, and um, just seeing if possibly that this sewer program, these late payments. And these people that are behind in their bills, if it could be covered under it, and Beth uh, reached out to. Three, three different individuals, and unfortunately, there's nothing available for them.
Alderman Parrot.
I I think to a city attorney's point is, whatever we decide. We should probably put some thought into as far as when March gets in twenty twenty-one comes around, and there's still. Some of them seven hundred, you know, dollars. Um, that comes due in, let's say, April, you know, will they have the funds to do it, to pay it? And then, so the the citizens really need to kind of understand, and perhaps we can put some language into a new letter. That gets them thinking progressively how to pay this stuff down, even if they didn't have late payments prior to. Uh, the uh, prior to March twenty.
Alderman Bateman.
So in my conversations with the with the girls at the sewer department, it, they do a great job at working with people. They, you know, they, Peggy said someone come in just this week and and paid the full seven hundred dollars they owed. Now whether they heard the council talk about it, whatever, but they paid the seven hundred dollars. And I I've I've been in city hall when they are making arrangements with people, they. I trust the girls in the sewer department to do the right thing for the city of Lincoln in making arrangements. With with people, but I agree, you know, I agree with yourself and the and the city attorney, you know, if they pay half. They have to be aware that's not the new normal, that a- and. Mrs. Bateman and the the other girls at the window, they, they're real good at telling people, say, you know. When when is the date, they they come up with a date, work with the individual, when can you be to zero? And work with that individual, and then it's a signed agreement, so a- at that end, it's it's a negotiated agreement.
Alderman Parrot.
Uh, just, just a couple of things, I think, one, then is there no longer late payments then after that, if they're coming up with an agreement? And two, for consistency purposes, as far as citizens across the the city, how do we know that there's consistency, what's going down? In 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 the office down there with an with the residents, with the citizens?
With, in the in the letter that's on here, it says that as long as they sign an agreement and adhere to it, there will be no late fees. That's that's a remarkable way of getting caught up if you only have so much funds, you're, as long as you make your payment. And you're paid off by March thirty-first of twenty twenty-one, you're not going to get late payments.
I'm I'm saying after March of twenty twenty-one because the, I don't know how they're going to necessarily do it.
If they're caught up, it's.
Per the letter, as of, because I was reading it while you guys were talking again. Uh, after March thirty-first, if you don't follow through with it, the late fees will be added back to your account, and then you you're right back in the same situation. Start to accrue late fees. Alderman Honecky, did you have something?
Yeah, just, yeah, real quick, I think, I think their notice would be their next, Peggy could help me, their next month bill. I mean, if they, if their balance was seven hundred and they came in and he made a hundred dollar payment on it. Their their next bill's going to show their balance is now six hundred.
Right.
Wiped away or, you know.
Right.
They're going to know.
Yeah, they'll still get a bill, they're still going to get a bill every month.
And I'll still have a balance, you know, they'll still see a balance on there, so I think that might be the the answer for, you know, that they.
Not if they sign an agreement, there won't be a late fee.
Let's say April twenty twenty-one, they, the agreement still goes through April twenty-one.
Well, the agreement is that they have to have their, be at a zero balance by March thirty-first of twenty twenty-one. So when they get their April bill, let's hope everybody that signed that agreement is adhered to it.
Alderman Bateman.
Uh, I was just going to touch on, it it's a signed agreement, you know. None of us can see the future. Uh, I I know in my own business, you know, I I get signed agreements with people that get behind. They make a consorted effort to to get to the date that they say. Wouldn't we get to that date, if if they're still a little short, I always, I I'm sure the sewer clerks, you reach out to them again and say, hey, you're you're still a couple hundred short. What can we work on here, you know, don't, don't leave us hanging, don't just quit paying. You know, we're we're all adults here, we like, you know, we like to work with people, but it it's the ones that aren't paying anything. I mean, we got some people, it is obvious, they're just chucking that bill in the trash, those people need their water shut off. And, you know, if, like I said, if if they don't come forward with an agreement, shut their water off, that'll get them in the door. That'll get them in the door in a hurry, so, uh, you know, there has to be some teeth in it also. Along with our compassion on helping working with them.
Yeah, and in looking at this letter that is proposed to go out with the bills, I think it actually covers everything that we've talked about. So even if we did away with the ninety-day letter, the certified one, this should still cover it. My only request, I think, would be the portion where it says your account needs to be paid in full, no later than March thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. Can we do something to highlight that or emphasize it, maybe underline it or bold it like you did in paragraph two?
Uh huh, yep.
So it stands out. Okay, so we have a motion on the table for removing nine F, I'll take care of that one first. Any other discussion on that one? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Bateman?
Yes.
Mr. Fleschman?
Yes.
Mr. Welch?
Yes.
Mr. Parrot?
Yes.
Mr. Downs?
Yes.
Mr. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Honecky?
Yes.
Mrs. Horn?
Yes.
Okay, next item up is nine G, approval of payment policy for sewer customers with accounts with delinquent balances incurred since March thirty-first, twenty twenty.
Motion to approve.
Second. Alderman Bateman made the motion, Alderman Fleschman's made the second discussion. Alderman Fleschman.
Yeah, just to be clear, that this, this is only going to eliminate late fees. Correct?
Well, the intention is to get the balance to zero, and if you stick with a payment arrangement and you fulfill that arrangement. Then those late fees will be waived per this letter.
They'll be waived monthly, but yeah.
Alderman Bateman.
This this is also. Water shut off if we don't hear from them by. November thirtieth, correct?
No, not in this letter. Now, there's nothing about November in any of these letters.
I mean, the the bills go out the end of October, if we don't hear from anybody by. Do we have to have a, shouldn't we have a date, I'm assuming the next bills would go out. November thirtieth.
Right.
If you haven't heard from anybody by November thirtieth. The first week of December, you should, you start the water shut off notices, is what I'm getting at.
Well, now that you, now that you took away the ninety-day letter, yeah, this one would have to be adjusted to that, if that's what you want.
They have a month to make arrangements, and water shut offs would start the first week of December for those people who didn't reach out and make arrangements. There there's still a process to shut their water off, they have to be notified first, so they're going to get a second chance. To make arrangements, once they, the water shut off notices go out, so that, that's two chances. So then, uh, what what is it realistically, the water shut off notices go out about the first week of December, and then the water shut offs start toward the end of December?
Well, at the time, they, it's like a ten-day process.
Yeah.
Yeah, so they'll be notified, and then they'll have time to come in and make arrangements, or they can ignore the notification that their water's going to be shut off, however, which way they want to go.
So I guess I'm conveying this isn't an all or none, they're actually going to get two chances to make arrangements. One, in the letter with their sewer bill, and two, once they get the notification, their water's going to be shut off. If they don't react to bo- both of those, uh, you know, I think it's time to shut the water off.
Alderman Parrot.
Just a quick question for clarification. So an individual that has a liquid account before March, they, they come in and, and they get that taken care of. And then in their, um, signed agreement, they say, we will, I will pay. Uh, next March, my entire balance then. Is that, will that be approved? Will that be approved by? The office downstairs with no late payments or anything like that?
I, I see what you're saying. They, they want to make a one-time payment and they'll come in, in March, not make monthly payments? That's, that's a good question.
I, I think that they need to at least make something each month in a, as a good faith effort that they're going to fulfill that.
I'm just asking the question because, I mean, it's an agreement, you know, and there's no, there's no standards for what the agreement has to say or what the, you know, what they're doing.
Well, actually, you know, there's going to have to be something in there requiring a monthly payment because as Peggy mentioned. Uh, the late fee will be waived on a monthly basis.
Okay, so they're going to pay a dollar a month until then, until March gets here? I'm just saying, there's, there'll be people that might do something like that.
I think we can leave that at the discretion of the clerk's office.
If. Pay their current bill plus.
Right.
Extra.
Like, let's say they have a forty dollar a month sewer bill. They need to pay their forty for the current charge plus something. And if they want to make a balloon payment before March, on the month of March, so be it. But they need to attempt something there.
So can we, can we add some language like that, that they have to pay the current month plus try to get it to even?
Yeah.
Well, I would.
Over the next month?
So now, so now we're doing a domino effect on our, on our documents here. So I think.
I apologize, I'm just trying.
No, no, it's, it's good. Um, before I say anything, uh, Alderman Honicky, did you have something?
Well, I just, again, yeah, like you said, we're sort of editing this as we go along. Me looking at this letter. In the notice, I should say, that, that, the beginning here, the second paragraph, the sentence, should the council decide to move forward with water shut off request? I, I think we've already made that determination that we are moving ahead with water shut offs. I don't know if that, if that's kind of a gray area for some people out there if they read that and say, well, it says, you know, should the council decide, you know? I don't know, I'm just throwing that out there.
But we're just assuming come March, based on what? That we can, or we can any other month, for that matter.
I think we're going to have to, in paragraph three, somewhere in there, put the November first date that Alderman Bateman had mentioned. So that sets that. And then when we're talking about the minimum payment that the council would like to see a delinquent customer pay. I think that could go on to the payment arrangement document. That would just be my thoughts on it.
The actual signed agreement.
Yeah, the third document that we haven't got to yet. So does someone want to make some proposed language for, um, Ms. Bateman to add into paragraph three? As long as you adhere to the payment plan, which must be, uh, entered into by November first. So that's, that's, that's what we're asking, correct? Peggy, can you make that?
Well, they, okay, the bills that go out October, the end of October, they're going to be due November twentieth. So like about November twenty second or November twenty first, once they get the payments in, they'll start putting late fees on. So those need to be all, everybody that's going to sign a contract needs to do that prior to that date. Prior to that twentieth date.
What date do you propose?
Well, we don't need. A hundred people standing here on November twentieth signing contracts, so even November fifteenth, I mean, that gives them.
Okay.
Five days, November fifteenth.
Any objections to November fifteenth? Okay, so that takes care of that. Can you add that language in then?
Yep.
That's a Sunday, by the way. Didn't, you said the fifteenth, November or December?
November.
Oh, okay, so, yeah, November fifteenth on a Sunday, so.
Make it the sixteenth.
Sixteenth?
Sixteenth is Sunday.
Sixteenth is Monday.
Or Monday, yeah.
Okay, so who, who made the motion and who made the second? Because you'll have to amend that to include this language.
I made the second.
Kevin made the motion.
Kevin, did you make the?
Yeah, he did.
So you'll have to do an amended motion, someone will, or you'll have to rescind your motions?
I'll rescind my second.
I'll rescind my motion and then Peggy can read out the notes that she's wrote, so. And then we'll make a motion on her letter as read.
Fleishman.
Do, do we have, want to have a discussion on the, uh, payment plan, actual payment plan before, because that is tied to the motion?
You would like to do that at this time?
Well.
We aren't voting on it at this time. We're, we'll have to vote on it next.
Oh, okay, all right. Yep, I'll wait then.
It's not a separate item on the.
Correct, it.
It's all the same, it's not a separate item.
Oh, you're right. Okay, yep, so Ron, um, we'll just, discussion. Jeff, can, would you like to propose language for the payment plan document as well?
Yeah, I mean, I'm in agreement with, uh, Alderman Parrot, but I, I think a dollar is not quite enough.
I think it'd be based on how much they owe, I mean.
You could do their, you could do a percentage, you could do a minimum, you could do their monthly payment. It could be done anyway.
As long as they got it all paid off by March thirty first.
Sounds like, sounds like it, it, a minimum of at least one month of your bill is what we were talking about earlier. That makes it simple. You know what that amount is.
Right.
So we will add that. Would that go into the blank space? Well, that'll just be added in there. That's just the direction that the clerk's office will take on filling these out. And then you'll fill it in in that blank spot, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so we don't need to amend that document itself. Okay, so what do you have down as the language for paragraph three, Peggy?
Um, let's see. If you would like to set up a payment plan, the city would stop all additional late fees as long as you adhere to the payment plan. That's entered by November sixteenth of twenty twenty.
Mr. Trezor.
Thank you, Mayor. I, this may be splitting hairs, but maybe you want to say which must be approved no later than November fifteenth, twenty twenty?
Agreed.
After what part?
Just where, after, uh, as long as you adhere to the payment plan, which must be approved no later than November sixteenth.
When, when will they receive these letters?
They'll go out when their sewer bills at the end of the month. On the thirtieth, which is a Friday.
So they'll have, probably like ten days.
Basically, two weeks to, to come in and get that done.
And they'll go out in anyone that has a delinquent dollar amount.
Can you read that back for us one more time, Ms. Bateman?
If you would like to set up a payment plan, the city would stop all additional late fees as long as you adhere to the payment plan, which must be approved. By November sixteenth, twenty twenty.
Bateman, did you want to make that motion?
I'll make the motion as read.
Second?
I'll second it.
Alderman Bateman made the motion and Alderman Fleishman second. Any further discussion? Alderman Bateman.
Can we get, uh, in your, in your monthly reports, can you add that to your monthly reports of how many peop-? Just not names, of course, but how many people made arrangements, uh, eh, eh, stuff so we know that, you know, we're moving in the right direction here?
Sure.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
Mr. Welch?
Yes.
Mr. Parrot?
Yes.
Mr. Downs?
Yes.
Mr. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Honicky?
Yes.
Mrs. Horn?
Yes.
Mr. Bateman?
Yes.
Mr. Hobble.
Were you guys voting on the amendment or the original document?
We rescinded the initial motions and made a amended motion.
Amended motion to include additional terms on there?
As the city clerk read.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure you guys were either voting on the amendment itself to add those terms and then voting on the document itself, or trying to mash them all together.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to item nine H. Approval of Professional Services Agreement. Between Azovar Audit Solutions Incorporated and the City of Lincoln.
For discussion purposes, I, I'll move.
I'll second for discussion purposes.
Alderman Parrot made the motion. Alderman Downs, second. Alderman Bateman.
Not a chance. Um, I did some research into this company, um. Quite frankly, nothing against Mr. Welch. The minute that gentleman put the city council on hold. That killed that vote for me. I'd have just hung up on the guy. But, um. In doing some research, uh, it seems like there's some troubles here. One, they've been with the city of Lincoln for ten years and found absolutely nothing, just spinning their wheels. Don't know why. Two, uh, emailed a. Article from the city of Freeport that found out that there's hidden fees in here. So another strike against this company and just the professionalism of the way that guy handled it. Um, I'm not saying maybe we should look at something else, but not with this company, no way.
Alderman Keller.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I agree with Alderman Bateman. Um, I think that on paper, it looked like a great idea. But, um, I guess my concern is the labor and the hours that it would involve our city clerk and city employees and city hall. To do all the legwork for this particular company and find all the documents necessary. Uh, and not knowing what they're getting into before we even start all of this. So, um, yeah, at first I thought it was a great idea, but I would also be a no on this.
Well, in my opinion on the matter is, uh, first of all, no offense taken, Mr. Bateman. Uh, I, as long as I've sat up here in this council chamber, I've never seen somebody come up and put the council on hold. Um, I, I was shocked at that and I, as I told you earlier today, my vote tonight would be a no. Because I think if you are giving somebody a sales pitch and you put them on hold or pick up the phone in the middle of it. That just shows your level of professionalism and you don't deserve the business.
If, if we vote no, that's, that's totally fine with me, but it was a good idea a- at first, you know, it seemed like a good idea on paper. Um, they were going to look for money that, that we could possibly collect that we're not looking for now. So essentially, it's, it's. Another revenue stream. Um, if we vote no to this agency, will we look at another similar agency? Or?
I think we can. Alderman Parrot?
Yeah, I don't know if we could ask, um, city, uh, Beth, if she could look into other, uh, entities. I, I, I asked, uh, the gentleman, uh, before or just threw it out there, you know, um, should we look at some others that might have a, a lower percentage? And I think that he said that there are worse that may, not anything in Illinois, I think, but maybe nationally. Uh, that would maybe have lower percentages, but they had other costs as well. Uh, it looks like he had other costs too. But, uh, I think it's worth, um, I think the idea is good, but to Ron's point, we, we shouldn't, we shouldn't know. How much labor is going to cause our people, um, ahead of time or, you know, while we get quotes or, you know, whatever, uh, from these individuals.
Well, in all fairness, and going back to what Sam said, I agree, I think it's a great idea. As I said last week, anytime somebody can help the city find money that we've overlooked, that's a good thing, especially when there's no money out of our pocket. When we sat down and had that conversation with those gentlemen, they told us that the documents that they would need are foliable documents. We asked how labor intensive it was going to be and they led us to believe that it, it wouldn't be a, a lot of time. To, um, to pull together what they needed. So I don't think it's, I don't think it's something that's going to take a whole lot of time. Now, we did say we don't want our confidential documents that may not be foliable leaving the building, so they offered to come to the building and sit here. Perhaps that could create a, a situation where they would be disrupting the daily operations of the clerk's office. I don't know. So, Mr. Trezor.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, you know, I don't have a vote on this, of course, but I would certainly not recommend going along with this agreement as written based on. Some of the things that, that many of you have said, but I asked this guy point blank if this included the property tax and he kind of, you know. Hedged on it and then he said, no, that it didn't. Well, you read the agreement that, that he's got in here. Um, and he says, he lists separately review and audit each fee ordinance, contract, et cetera. And locally imposed occupation tax, ad valorem tax, which is the property tax. We don't have any other ad valorem taxes. The others are transactional. Uh, personal property tax doesn't exist in Illinois anymore. That would be an ad valorem tax, but we don't have that in Illinois. So, uh, if, he's not going to dig into the property taxes, which could cause us a number of problems. Um, I'm not sure what ad valorem tax he's talking about, but he's got it in the agreement. So it's contrary to what he, completely contrary to what he said.
Ms. Caveman.
Yes, I'll, I'll do whatever the council wants me to do, but, uh, I, I just looking through this article that, um, that Mr. Alderman Bateman had sent. And I don't know if they ever, ever mentioned anything about software. Did, did they, city clerk? I, I don't understand where that came from in this article, but, um. Yeah, we, you know, if there were hidden fees, uh, they're hidden because I didn't hear anything about that stuff.
Alderman Bateman.
I'd, I'd just like to point out like I did last week is. These kind of ideas are great for modern communities with everything's been digitized. That's not the city of Lincoln. Even if they come in here, I mean, we're, we're not a digitized community. It, it's, they want to pull Silco records. It's someone from the clerk's office going to the basement, digging through boxes or the attic or, or whatever to pull those out. It, we, we don't, we don't have anything that's digitized. Um, from what I know, i- i- in some of the research I've asked to do. There's two or three years worth of documents kept in filing cabinets and everything else goes in boxes downstairs. I mean, the, the, the kind of stuff he's talking about and why we even agreed to it is, and I agree, it's a good idea. But the problem is, no matter what company we reach out to, it is a labor intensive ordeal. For the city of Lincoln to get the documents that they want. That, that's, that's the problem there. Who's going to pay our people to, to get the documents they want? Yes, they're foliable. They're foliable because someone goes and gets those documents and, and makes photocopies of them and sends them. I mean, the administrator knows that, the clerk's office knows that, Chuck knows that. That's the problem with, with what they're, what they're proposing is we're not equipped for that kind of information.
Alderman Parrot.
At some point, would it be worth, um, the time of the, of the city of Lincoln to check, uh, putting our documents on digital? Formats. Uh, don't we have companies here in, in Lincoln that, that do stuff like that?
The, the county was doing it when I left the county board. They had a company come in every weekend, brought in a huge scanner. And digitized. They might be done by now because I know it was going on for months.
I know that. I thought there was a company in town that did it for hospitals and things of that nature here, uh, smaller company. But there's something to check into at least because, I mean, we just can't keep using excuse, we're a small community and, and, because there's smaller communities that, that do it digitally as well. Um, and I think it'd be worth our, our investment in, in, in looking into that.
Well, like, we have a, an IT committee internally that, um, can take that task up among the other. Well, like, we have a, an IT committee internally that, um, can take that task up, among the other things that they're looking at. Alderman Keller?
Isn't that somehow associated with that new company that we're working with to digitize our city codes and ordinances?
I don't think E-code could do that.
That was my question, excuse me, that was my question, but I, I don't know if it extends to that type of, um, work, do you know, I don't, do you know?
Okay.
Chief Adams?
Thank you. Uh, as far as I know, actually, most of our documents and everything else are scanned in, and OCR'd in, are in, in a digital format, so. I'm not sure what's not in a digital format at this point.
Your documents, correct?
Well, some of the things that they were looking at were Comcast, right, and things like Amran, and those things are accessible online, so they're digitized by the companies themselves. So, it wouldn't be labor-intensive any more than it would be for you at home to log in, look at your past bills, shoot it out a printer, or send them a copy of that. It just depends on all of the stuff they're looking for. Ms. Cavillman?
I'm just thinking, if we look into this with some other company, we should make sure we, um, have them identify what kinda documents they are looking for, so maybe that would be easier to. They never, yeah, they didn't say as well as the software that's involved.
Yeah, we didn't hear anything about software in their pitch to us. Alderman Bateman?
Well, that's kinda what I was getting at, is this gentleman's pitch on the phone, he's like, he, he should know. Again, this is just this gentleman, he should have known that utility bills and such are digitized, but then he made the offer to come here and look for stuff, so if, if, shouldn't the company know whether they need to physically come to the city to dig for documents versus, I mean, he made that comment, so I just assumed it, it's stuff that isn't digitized, or he would have known that, that's what I'm getting at. I, I don't know if the reputable company should be able to say, "We can get everything we can get." I, I, I know at times when I was working with, with the solar and, uh, stuff, all we had to do was give them a signed document releasing our power bills to let them look at it. Is, you know, is, if that's all it is, it's not that labor-intensive. But when he made the offer to come here and make copies of stuff, that kinda threw up the red flag of, what are we digging for here? If it's an actual hard copy of something.
Alderman Parrot?
So basically, the city has just about every current document, I guess, digitalized as, as far as bills and, and things of that nature? Twenty-ten? Like Amran, like for Silco or whatever, how, how would, how would a company get access to the city's, you know, power bills or anything like that, unless the city gave them to them?
Right, the, the bills themselves, like, now the new software, they're scanned in the software, but I'm not letting them in my software either. So you'd physically have to pull the item from the payable drawer or box and give it to them.
So there would be some labor then?
Right.
So, what I'm hearing from the council is that, um, they would not like to move forward with this at this time.
We got a second, yeah, we just have that.
We have a second, so let's vote.
Just for this company, you know, right? We're voting yea- yay or no for this guy.
Right.
Yeah. Why don't you have a? The motion and the second was just for discussion purposes, Alderman.
It was for discussion purposes.
Yeah, but I think we, city attorney can keep us honest here, but.
I don't know the actual veracity of having a second for discussion purposes, I think once you make it a second, that there has to be a vote thereafter.
Agreed. So, any other discussion on this topic?
Just to clarify, I think this, the second for discussion purposes is, with the lack of a second, it would have just died. By having a second, we've now vetted this problem, and we're, we're voting yes or no for this company.
Correct. Roll call, please.
Mr. Downs?
No.
Mr. Keller?
No.
Mr. Hornicki?
No.
Mrs. Horn?
No.
Mr. Bateman?
No.
Mr. Flushman?
No.
Mr. Welch?
No.
Mr. Parrot?
No.
Okay. And we, Alderman Bateman?
So, if the city administrator's gonna do some research into this kinda subject, obviously, I think we need to get more in-depth in the questions of what documents they're wanting and such, um, to make sure it works for the city in a way that makes sense before we even bring another company forward for a vote. So, if, if you can just make sure you ask in-depth conversations, maybe include the council on some of them in case we got questions on, on what kinda documentation they would be looking for, and what kinda, so we get an idea of what kinda, uh, labor we would be entailing in, in the documentation that they would need, would be nice if, you know, we do decide to bring another company forward.
Yeah, I would, I would recommend probably getting in touch with the city clerk and the city admini- uh, the city, uh, treasurer.
Ms. Cavillman?
Yes, we did, we did ha- hold a meeting with them, I think, were there three or four gentlemen, or no lady, I think?
Yes.
Yeah, um, it was the city clerk, city treasurer, um, mayor, and, um, I were on that, uh, conference call, Zoom meeting.
Okay, so, Ms. Cavillman, we'll look into other companies that do it, we'll put together a list of, of, um, things that we need to ask them about, and, uh, we'll go from there, she'll bring that back to us at a, at a future date. Okay, um, next up is, um, announcements. Anyone have an announcement? Ms. Cavillman?
I do, I have one announcement, um, the gentleman, uh, said he'd contact the city clerk, but you said you'd not received it either, but, um, I just wanted to make sure everybody understands that, um, on Wednesday, the twenty-first, there will be a job fair held at the Hampton Inn from one PM to, I think, six PM, and it will be for the purpose of, um, hiring, um, swine flu, um, sorry, a swine production assistant, I'm sorry about that, swine production assistant at, uh, one of our local farms, and it's got the Lincoln, Illinois address, that's why I included it.
Thank you. Uh, the only announcement I have is the council approved the trick-or-treat hours this evening, so that'll be going on on thirty-first. And we posted yesterday on my Alderman page, um, trick-or-treat with the mayor, and that'll happen on the same date. We just figured since Halloween falls on a Saturday, that we'll do both of those, confirm with downtown businesses, so they're good. So that'll be from ten AM to noon, so come to Latham Park, ten AM, between ten and eleven, pick up a map of the participating businesses, um, I'll hand each of the kids out some candy, and then we'll, um, send them on their way with their parents. So, uh, we are going to try to get individuals to, um, just kinda help people cross streets, but, um, just as if you were out on your own in public, if you have your children, please look both ways, be safe, um, and look out for, for your loved ones, and when you do show up, remember that a, this is for all of trick-or-treating, that a costume mask is not a substitute for a real mask that we're, we're wearing these days. So, um, sanitize, proper PPE, keep your distance from people while you wait. Okay, any other announcements? Okay, motion adjourned?
Motion adjourned.
Second.
Alderman Keller made the motion, Alderman Hornicki, second. All in favor?
All right.
All opposed? Meeting is adjourned at eight twenty PM.